All right, we will get started with our September eighth meeting of Board of Education. And we'll start things off with a prayer and a pledge, and it is my month, so let's get going. All right, we'll start with a prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for all you give us, for allowing us to be here in our community in this school system, and try to make the decisions that we feel are best for the school system. We thank you for our community. There's no place better to be in the state of North Carolina than right here in Surrey County, and we thank you for that. Please be with us during this meeting, and for everyone as they travel home tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item will be the approval of the agenda, and Mr. Badgett.
Yes, let me pull it up there real quick, I can't, is it seven point oh six? No, six. No, six point seven. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented with the exception of removing, uh, item six point oh seven, memorandum between Surrey County Schools and Surrey County Schools Education Foundation, because, uh, it's just not ready yet for signature.
Okay, we have a motion to remove six point zero six, Surrey County Schools and Educational.
Six, six oh seven. Right? That's what I've got on, on the computer, say six oh seven.
Okay, okay, I've got the over, I apologize.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second.
I have a second.
Everybody's second. Mr. Scale's second, I heard first. Uh, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving right along, Surrey County Schools Teacher of the Month. Dr. Reeves.
Good evening, Board members, thank you for being here tonight. We want to thank Pilot Mountain Elementary School for hosting our board meeting. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our September Teacher of the Month, Ms. Patty Martin, fifth grade teacher at Rockford Elementary School. Let's give her a big round of applause. Patty teaches science, congratulations. Patty teaches science at Rockford Elementary School, and she does an excellent job. Uh, her students, it was really fun to surprise you last week, did we get you?
Yeah.
Uh, her students love her, I want to read this recommendation. Rockford Elementary School's Patty Martin, exceptional dedication to student learning is truly commendable. Her willingness to transition across grade levels in order to embrace the fifth grade science curriculum reflects not only her adaptability, but also her deep commitment to academic excellence. Patty consistently goes above and beyond to ensure her students receive engaging, high-quality science instruction, and her enthusiasm for the subject inspires both her colleagues and her students. Her leadership and initiative make her an invaluable asset to our school community. Uh, that's the recommendation, uh, written by a fellow colleague at Rockford Elementary School. Ms. Martin, thank you for all you do. Uh, for those in the audience and board members, this past year, we had a brand-new science curriculum, brand-new standards, and Ms. Martin did such a great job that her scores were the highest in the district. So, she's certainly getting a lot of things right at Rockford Elementary School in fifth grade. So, congratulations again, we are so happy to recognize you, and I want to thank Jeff Fitzgerald, uh, from Accurate Insurance Solutions, if you'll come up forward with the board, we'll, uh, certainly congratulate Ms. Martin.
The most impressive part, though, is taking care of that kid, that kid back there. Do you want to call him out and tell him he's brought with you?
Yeah, my husband.
No. He said, no, no.
The North Carolina Governor's School is a four-week summer residential program for gifted and talented high school students, integrating academic disciplines, the arts, and unique courses on each of two campuses. Learning focuses on the exploration of the most recent ideas and concepts in each discipline, and it does not involve credit, tests, or grades. Students are selected to attend through a competitive process after being nominated by their public school unit or non-public school. Two students from Surrey County Schools were nominated, then applied for, auditioned, and were accepted into this prestigious program. Cameron Cruz was accepted into the North Carolina Governor's School for Mathematics, and then we have another student who couldn't be here this evening, Emma Hunter, she was accepted to the North Carolina Governor's School for Visual Art. They both attended the program over the summer, and we are extremely proud of them. Congratulations to these two students on this outstanding accomplishment. Thank you.
Board members, it gives me great pleasure to recognize one of our own from the central office, Ms. Sherry Parks. If you'll come forward, Ms. Parks. Ms. Parks is our Child Nutrition Director and does a great job, and Board members, she was recognized by the state of North Carolina by the School Nutrition Program on winning the Gary W. Gay Award of Excellence for Farm to School. Mrs. Parks was recognized at the School Nutrition Association of North Carolina, their annual conference in Greensboro. And I just want to say thank you to Ms. Parks, uh, for being selected as this recipient, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate all you do for our students, uh, and the operation you run each and every day. You do a great job, and, uh, we truly appreciate your experience and expertise, congratulations.
I got a really neat prize for this, I'll show it to you, but thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, it's just such an honor, and I wanted to accept it on behalf of my staff, because they are awesome.
There's not a better, better program in the state, I can tell you that. Are we okay?
All right, big smiles, three, two, one, one more, three, two, one. You are most welcome. Okey-dokey, over the summer, Surrey County School students attended the HOSA International Conference in Nashville, Tennessee. At the, at the conference, they attended general sessions, participated in educational workshops, exploring various aspects of health careers, and competed in their respective competitions against students from all over the world. At this time, I would like to begin recognizing students, starting with East Surrey High Schools' Anne Campbell Pace, Occupational Therapy, first place. Surrey Early College High School, Ashlyn Medina, Leadership, eighth place. Anaya Swetman, Barbara James Service Award, Bronze Level. Belinda Juarez, Barbara James Service Award, Bronze Level as well. Jordan Beasley, she represented Surrey Early College as a North Carolina HOSA State Officer and Voting Delegate. Lucas White, Organic Chemistry, third place, Physics, seventh place, and a Barbara James Service Award Gold Level. Central Middle School, Madeline Branch, Foundations of Veterinary Science, fourth place. Medevue Magnet Middle School, Addison Cornett, Math for Health Careers, sixth place. Abigail Southern, Life-Threatening Situations, first place. Pilot Mountain Middle School, Noel Snow, Health Career Preparation, second place. Emmy Lynn Haymore, Prepared Speaking, tenth place. Gentry Middle School, Charlie Moser, ex, I can't even say that the correct way, there we go, yes, Health Poster, eighth place. Congratulations to all these students, and I realize I jumped ahead in the recognition line. We have one more recognition for Outstanding Secondary Math Teacher. And at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Shannon Duplessis up to the podium.
Good evening, Board of Education. This evening, I have the great privilege of recognizing an outstanding Surrey County School educator. The North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction strive to recognize and reward mathematics teachers who exemplify mathematics education by nurturing students' enthusiasm for mathematics through everyday classroom experiences. This year, we would like to recognize Mrs. Rhonda Taylor of Pilot Mountain Middle School. Ms. Taylor utilizes every second of instructional time with her students to effectively deliver mathematics instruction to students. She forms positive relationships with students and parents through open communication and respect. Ms. Taylor is truly a phenomenal teacher. She has a strong command of the state curriculum, which allows her to plan lessons that are both rigorous and informative. She strategically incorporates formative assessments so she can use data to inform all of her instruction. Ms. Taylor is an exceptional in implementing math vocabulary into her lessons so that it becomes second nature for students. In addition, she skillfully incorporates procedural fluency with conceptual understanding, ensuring that students develop both computational accuracy and critical thinking abilities. Ms. Taylor's unwavering commitment to academic excellence and high expectations for all students is quite impressive. Ms. Taylor has exceeded growth expectations for the last three years. She is truly a spectacular teacher who deserves to be praised and celebrated. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Rhonda Taylor as Surrey County Schools Outstanding Secondary Mathematics Teacher.
All right, now I know everybody's going to scatter, but recognition is over, but I want to take a liberty real quick. Uh, before everybody starts to leave, I, I won't hold you just a second. Uh, these HOSA kids come up here a lot, and I just want to say how much that we, as the board, and myself, and everybody here, and the superintendent and everybody appreciate the HOSA advisors. Because there is a lot, a lot of work that goes into this, and I think that sometimes you all, uh, uh, don't get the recognition you deserve, but, uh, y'all have done a fantastic job, and I appreciate you. Thank you, let's give him a round. All right, I'm done, you can go if you don't want to. Okay, we'll move right along, first item on the reports and discussion, five point oh one is Safety Vestibule Update. And that will be Mr. Doug Dixon. He's still with us, maybe.
Good afternoon, Board, I got some good news.
We're done.
I hope it's good news anyways. Um, our four doors for our vestibule project are in, and they will be installed tomorrow. So that will finish up all the construction for the vestibule projects. Uh, next week, we will do the punch list, and the fire marshal, and the, uh, building inspection, Building Inspector Office will show up and do the final inspections. So we will be able to put those in the books. Would you happen to have any questions about that?
The entry is almost there, we just need the final inspection, that was the last one.
Final inspection, yes, sir.
No questions, but thank you for your hard work, thank you.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And timely. Toward naming schedule order, yeah.
So, and at Surrey Central, those door locks and all that is, that's completed now?
Our guys are going around making sure everything's pinned correctly.
Okay.
Yes, they're, everything's, everything is operational.
Fantastic, good job.
As of today.
Good job, excellent, all right. Anybody have anything else?
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move, uh, along, uh, the consolidation feasibility presentation, and Dr. Reeves is going to share the presentation. First, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hutchins. You are the, uh, Chairman of our Building and Grounds Committee, and you and Mr. Badgett as well were part of a committee that had been discussing all of this, and I was going to turn it to you to see if there's anything you would like to say before Dr. Reeves starts his presentation.
No, nothing other than I would, I would like for the public to give us a chance to get finished. There's a lot of rumors out there, and I guess Dr. Reeves are going to address them, but no decisions have been made at this point, so, uh, let's hang on, we're, we're heading toward getting everybody the information that they need.
And, and I would just say that I'd echo that, and, and yeah, Dr. Reeves will cover a couple of things that's been floating around that are not true, but I, I, I will tell you that we've had three meetings, and every meeting, the focus of every meeting has been what's best for our students. And that's going to remain the focus. Uh, who cares about eighty-nine, who cares about a fifty-year-old building? Right now, it's the kids, all that other stuff is secondary, so please know that as we're going through, and no decisions have been made. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Reeves?
Well, good evening again, uh, Board members, we have a presentation that really outlines a lot of information and a lot of work that members of this consolidation feasibility committee have put together. And so for the sake of tonight's meeting, we will be looking at the, uh, presentation board there to your left. Um, I want to first introduce all the folks that are on our subcommittee. So, you notice the folks on the left, um, those are folks at the central office, our board members, but notice the folks on the right. So we have both principals from Gentry and Medevue were part of the subcommittee. Also, Nor, Paige Badgett, Principal at North Surrey High School, former principal at Gentry Middle School, Trudy Phelps, Gentry teacher, Cory Buhlen, Medevue teacher, Jonathan Phillips, Jamie Holloman, both teachers and athletic directors, two parents, Robbie Gardner from Gentry, Brittany King from Medevue, and then Bill Powell, our consultant, who helped us with a lot of the data that we'll share tonight, and then, of course, Dove Hunter. Um, and Holly Lyons has been, Holly's on the other side, but you see our directors on the left and, and folks from our schools. And some folks have said, well, how'd those folks get on this committee, well, the principals. I, I asked them to, to find folks, we wanted a teacher representative, we wanted a parent representative, they, uh, and certainly we wanted, uh, uh, their athletics, uh, directors on the committee. So our principals selected those people that are on the committee, and we've had three meetings, and I think it's important to kind of put this together in a timeline, there you go. So, uh, on the far left, Gentry was opened in nineteen seventy-six. I think that probably had a lot to do with the Patriot, uh, being mascot, because nineteen seventy-six was, uh, uh, birthday for our country. Medevue was constructed in two thousand. There are probably some folks in our community that never realized that Gentry was the only middle school in the North District for many years, there for about twenty-five years, twenty-six years, until Medevue was opened. Um, in two thousand fourteen, we conducted our first facility evaluation, and that was something, I became superintendent January first of two thousand thirteen. And when we started looking at the facility needs of our school system, it was real easy to identify, uh, in my opinion, our most dire need, but your opinion, you might have a different need. And the next person may say, well, now this other school down the road, they, their, their situation's a lot worse. Well then, how do we go to the county commissioners and really make a viable case that this school in this district is our, our, by far, has the highest need? Well, certainly opinions matter, but it was important for us to go, uh, and have an expert conduct a facility study. So we did that on all of our schools, and Mr. Bill Powell did that study in two thousand fourteen. And the other interesting fact that once we finished our study, I was able to meet with the superintendent of Mount Erie City Schools and Elkin City Schools, and both of those districts used Mr. Powell and did the same study with their. and both of those districts used Mr. Powell and did the same study with their facilities. So all three school systems had the same facility evaluation done by the same person. And so it really helped us when all three districts went to the county commissioners and said, here are our needs. And from that 2014 study in Surrey County Schools, our top priority was three elementary schools, Franklin, Mountain Park, and Dobson. All, and I'll share a little bit more about the evaluation. But the point is this, the evaluation helped us with about $25 million in needs at those three elementary schools. The second priority on our list in 2014 was the three high schools. And that still remains the top priority in the second study. Gentry Middle School was the third priority as it came down to the very, kind of the end. And then the fourth priority were some ancillary buildings at other campuses. So 10 years later, we did a second study with Bill Powell. And then we also looked at our district facilities, our central office, our bus garage, our technology building. We looked at all those facilities with Mr. Powell in 2014. And then, after we had the results, Mr. Powell met with our board, and we've come to the conclusion that it was time for us to meet and begin thinking about the next 10 years, the next 20 years, the next 50 years of Surrey County Schools based on the evaluation of an expert, not just my opinion, not just someone else's opinion, but based on the opinion of an expert. And if Bill was here today, he would tell you the life of a building in the eyes of an architect is about 50 years. The life of a school building is about 50 years. And when you think about your roof, roof won't typically last 50 years. But you're thinking about the internal components, your life safety components, your heating, your plumbing, your electrical needs, sometimes it's exterior needs with parking, maybe ADA access. But, so that's kind of a general rule. So that's kind of a timeline, and our committee has met three times since you asked us to get together in June. And here we are today on August 20th. So Lucas, I'm having a hard time reaching. Okay. So facts versus misconceptions, so there's probably some things floating. Let me just tell you the facts. So the study is being conducted to explore options and give this board the facts. I think it's real important to look at the numbers. The other thing, we wanted to make sure, Gentry Middle School, this is a fact, it was opened in '76, and it does need significant upgrades. It's at 50 years old. So we're at that 50-year mark. And it's also noted in the second facility study behind the three high schools as the second highest priority. Gentry and Metta View were once combined, that is a fact. Misconceptions, and I think this is something that just want to make sure this was maybe floating around. Only Gentry students will be placed in trailers. That's absolutely a misconception. Another misconception is that there's already been a decision made that the central office would be moving into the Gentry building. That's a misconception. Consolidation will happen immediately. That's absolutely false. There's no way we can do this quickly. Staff positions will be eliminated without discussion. Absolutely not. Community voices not being heard in the process. Absolutely not. And consolidation will be unprecedented or brand-new ideas for Surrey County Schools. And really, that's not true either, because these two middle schools were once combined. So just really, kind of thinking about the school closing procedures. Board of Education members, by statute, you really have to look at several pieces to a school, to a community, before you can just up and close the school. And so you have to have it, have to have an evaluation. You need to look at the capacity, membership, organization of the total school system, costs, transportation, diversity. All those things where you see the green boxes are things that we feel pretty good that we're going to cover tonight in this presentation, things that this feasibility committee have looked at. Certainly, we've not made decisions, but we're going to be able to present you some really hard data. Other things, alternative uses, tentative decision, public hearing, closing decisions. All those things would be things that you would do in the future if you chose to take the next step or the next couple of steps. But basically, general statute outlines your role, your procedures, the procedures we have to follow before you can just up and close a building. One question we've gotten a lot is what do you do if you chose to close the building? What do you do with the property? So Ms. Lauren Neely, our CFO, is going to explain that process.
So if a school does decide to consolidate two different schools, and they decide, if the Board of Education decides that the building of the school that they're closing is not necessary anymore to the district, then the property may be disposed of following North Carolina General Statute 160A-12, in which case, the Board of County Commissioners shall be afforded the first opportunity to obtain the property. The property may be offered at a fair market price or at a price negotiated between the two boards. If the Board of County Commissioners does not want or need the property, then the Board of Education would follow any other option outlined in the surplus property general statutes.
I think it's real important to note the first sentence. When or if the Board deems a building as unnecessary or undesirable. So obviously, you've not done that. But that's a question I've gotten, and probably a question you've gotten, and probably a question folks here in the audience may have tonight. So again, no decision's been made. But we wanted to hit that at the very beginning of the presentation, just so people have an understanding that nothing happens quickly, and this is a very deliberate process when thinking about closing a school. All right, so. Three parts to tonight. We're going to look at the facility evaluation, both the 2014 and 2024 process. We'll look at enrollment forecast by districts. And we'll look at some conceptual cost estimates and funding options. And again, this facility study was done by Bill Powell. I think the one part that I should note is the date, 23-24. So some of these conceptual cost estimates are a few months ago. So you can only imagine that cost has increased. And so again, we're going with the data we had at the most appropriate time. In this facility evaluation, Mr. Powell really takes a look at our schools, and he used a basic scoring matrix for all 51 buildings on 18 school campuses. So obviously, many of our schools were built in different eras, just like this school. There's different buildings on this campus. And according to the time they were built, obviously, some are in a little better shape than others. And this conceptual cost estimate provides a general overall cost or level of magnitude for what it would cost to renovate the facility. And by really definition of renovation in Mr. Powell's terms, he's talking about basically gutting the facility and starting with the bones of the school and building back. So for, I guess, the sake of a definition. These conceptual cost estimates, he tried to put together summaries, give you comments, and just really paint an overall district picture of what this evaluation looks like for the district. And again, in the 2014 model, or 2024 model, he certainly did include our central offices. I think these summaries are formatted to give you, again, that overall picture, identify school by school needs and shortfalls. In some schools, it's one building. In other schools, it's the entire campus. We're also taking a look at size, space adequacy, or absence of a space or need. These evaluation results were identified and really categorized. I think the next to the last bullet is one of the most important for me. Some of the systems are hidden. So you may look at a building and say, well, there's nothing wrong with that building. It looks great. But those most critical maintenance needs, things like boilers, chillers, air conditioning units, roofs, electrical fire alarm, intercom phones, asbestos surveys, all those are part of the evaluation and things that maybe I don't notice every day because I'm not a contractor. I'm not an expert in buildings. Those are the kinds of things that Mr. Powell took a look at. And one of the things he said to our committee, the building should never be a distraction to learning. So what creates distractions? Noise, smells, furniture that may or may not be the right fit, ADA accessibility. Not convenience, not wants, but needs. So all those things are part of this evaluation. So. Mr. Powell had a, basically, a scoring rating. There you can see the scores. He did that on all of those 51 buildings, just to kind of give you an idea. He also then, for sake of visual, I won't go through this, but you can see green means the building was good, yellow, not so good, and red, certainly, poor. Notice, I think the most important part on this slide is to note at the bottom, 51 buildings in 18, on 18 campuses. I thought you have 20 schools. Well, one's an online school. The other one's at Surrey Early College at the campus of Surrey Community College. So yes, we have 20 schools, but on 18 different campuses. So in the 2024 study, it was important to note that 14 buildings scored below 50%. And that 50% mark is they're adequate, 25 to 49%, they're adequate but have numerous needs. Note, there's nine buildings in that category and six in the 24% and below. And according to Mr. Powell, we should consider demolition when they're at that point. Also, out of the 14 buildings, 12 are at the three high schools. Out of the 14 buildings in the study, 12 are at the three high schools. The two remaining buildings, one is the Flat Rock Cafeteria, and the other being Gentry Middle School. So we get to this conversation about Gentry through this 2014-2024 facility study in which we know we have three aging high schools that are over 60 years old. And those conceptual cost estimates to repair those three high schools over a year ago is $182 million to repair those three high schools with a renovation, not a rebuild, but a renovation. So the second part of the study was take a look at student forecast. Where are students? Where are their families? So we take a look at the total population trends. We take a look at live birth records. Take, we've looked at birth rates and death rates for 10 years in Surrey County, just understanding growth, kindergarten enrollment, student enrollment history. We look at all these pieces to try to help us understand trends of where people are so that if you renovate a school, or if you build a new school, you know exactly where to put it. So one thing we did in the first study. Lucas, can you just advance? Thank you. In the first study, this, I know it's a lot of colors, but let me just set the stage. We took the 2000s, 2010 census data and compared it to where people live, and then did a correlation with our elementary attendance zones. So these are adults from the 2000-2010 census. And basically, you can see where the county's growing and where it's not. And this is from 2000 to 2010. And of course, the dark green areas were your highest growth. The light green, less growth. The red and orange, negative growth. 10 years of data, 2000-2010. Okay, the next slide is 2010 to 2020. Okay? Your red is your negative growth. Your green is your positive growth. And then the yellow and red, or the yellow and orange are the in-between areas. So you see a little consistency where we're seeing no growth, or at least neutral growth to no growth, especially up in the upper quadrant. That is the Westfield community and the Flat Rock community in the far right-hand corner of the screen. The next slide takes a look at those two compared side by side. And this presentation is on the board agenda, and it is out there in the public. So anyone in the public, you can access the same, same information. So if you take a look at the next slide, this is probably the most important slide, is trying to forecast where students are and then where they will be. Thank you, Lucas. So I realize you can't see these numbers, so I'm just going to kind of give you a synopsis. But basically, what Mr. Powell has done is we've taken a look at the North District, East District, Central District, and we've tried to project based on where we've been and where we think we're going, population numbers up to 2032 to 2033. And so when we look at Surrey Central High School, for example, we think in Surrey Central High School in 2032, 2033, they are going to go from 669 students to 645 students. So that's a negative 3.7 decrease in that zone. Okay? That's Surrey Central, Central District. When we look at the North District, we're looking North Surrey High School from 828 to 744. That's a 10% decrease. And folks, you know, birth rates are declining. People are having fewer children. And then other people, there are choices in public education, whether that be charter schools, private schools, or vouchers. People aren't always going to their public school. And at the East Surrey, where we have 601 students, and we see the sharpest decline to 468 students, that's a 22% decline. And let me just be real careful and say that. That means all things are constant now. We're projecting seven, eight years where we don't know the future. Amazon is building a nice little facility in the North District. Not sure it'll bring a lot of jobs, but we're not sure what could happen right here or in Dobson, or, you know, just across the line that would bring more people to the community. But all things being equal, given what the data we have, both current data with students sitting in chairs and data from the Office of State Budget Management that Mr. Powell used to get this data, it really, trying to see where we're at and where we're going. So it just kind of paints a picture of where we're at. And you can kind of start looking at numbers for the North District. And we're here tonight to talk about Metta View and Gentry. So we know, we know projections are declining in time. And we've got another slide that'll really dive deeply into Metta View and Gentry's numbers. So, next slide. Thank you, Lucas. So if we compare the school building square footage to school enrollment, what we're trying to do is eliminate square footage that's not needed. It's as simple as that. We're trying to right-size the district. And this is a challenging task, because what are we talking about? We're talking about five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 50 years from now. When we look at the full scope and scale of this school system, the needs that we have with our three high schools, and now with our middle schools in the North District. So we're trying to take a look at all of those. And then the factors that could affect these trends. Next slide, Lucas. As I mentioned, more births, fewer births, economic development, job opportunities, increased farming, land-based occupations, larger families. All of these things could impact the numbers, right? They could impact these numbers. But we've been looking at the data since the 2000-2010 census. So, next slide. This kind of helps you understand how much square footage we have, where we have excess capacity, and where we think we're going to have excess capacity in the future. The future five years, 10 years, 20 years from now. We see that and know that we are going to have excess capacity. And so when we think about this from an economic standpoint, we're just trying to present the board facts. All right, next slide. That brings us to Metta View and Gentry. So thinking about this evaluation, when we look at the two buildings and going back to the scores that Mr. Powell, Metta View, the building, had an 81. That was the evaluation score. And obviously, Metta View is only 25 years old. Gentry scored 49, so that was right at the cusp of renovation and needing a lot of work. Consolidating these two schools would lower this square footage amount and would certainly help us with some district maintenance cost. On another note, when we take a look at those conceptual cost estimates, the estimate to replace Gentry and renovate Gentry is around forty million dollars, again, based on data that's over a year old. And we know that, thinking about the three high schools, that's money that could be used toward trying to renovate one of those three. And we also realize there's some reduced administrative and operational savings. So that's a part of the presentation tonight. And that was a part of what Mr. Powell found in his study in trying to think about giving the board options. Next slide. So, we've looked at the facilities, the evaluation of the facilities, where we think students are, where we think they're going to be. The next part of the presentation really dives into cost savings predictions. Again, these are predictions, we'll go through the numbers and let you answer these. I'm going to invite Ms. Duplessis up to talk about our average daily membership from 2035 to 2032.
Okay, good evening again. So our team was tasked at looking at current and projected enrollment for a possible consolidation. And I want to be very clear here that we are looking, when we're talking, when my team looked at this projected enrollment, we are looking at the students in the seats as of right now and how they would kind of flow through the grade levels and into a consolidated school. So these numbers are extremely accurate in that I just looked at the enrollment numbers as of today at the feeder schools Franklin, Flat Rock, Cedar Ridge, White Plains, and then also looked at the enrollment, current enrollment at Gentry and Metta View. One of the things that we talked about as a committee is the potential of phasing out the magnet program and possibly taking high school courses and expanding those across the district to provide additional opportunities for students. So the numbers that you see up on the screen are without magnet students. Currently, if you look at magnet numbers, we have twenty-three magnet students who are not in the North District that would be impacted by consolidation. You can see, this graph or the chart, actually, I looked at enrollment as of 2025, 2026 through 2031, 2032. And you will notice down at the bottom, in 2029, 2030, we see a decrease of forty-seven students. So that is when the significant dip happens that Mr. Powell alluded to in his feasibility study. So you will also, I have additional numbers down at the bottom to indicate other dips. We do see a peak in 2027, and then that rapidly declines after that. Okay, next slide. So of course, ADM always factors into human resources. So in looking at the current staffing needs versus the staffing needs of a consolidated school, currently, between Metta View and Gentry, there are twenty-six core teachers. There are thirteen encore teachers and approximately thirty-three classified staff. That includes TAs, child nutrition, custodian, bus drivers. Consolidated staffing needs, you would still need twenty-six teachers. And we'll look at how twenty-six teachers impacts class size with a consolidated school. But an encore teachers, we would only need ten teachers. It would be important to reference that these would be ten full-time encore teachers. So currently, there are a couple of shared staff between the two schools. And then roughly about twenty-nine classified employees, and that's really dependent on the enrollment at that school. The total potential savings is roughly about five-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. That does include fifty-seven thousand dollars in child nutrition. And I know that Ms. Parks will speak more to that later in the presentation. Most of the savings would be found in primarily the encore teachers, classified staff, principal position, things of that nature. Next slide. So how does that impact class sizes? That's a big question. So if you look up on the screen, what we did is our team took our sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade allocations of teachers currently as it stands. So how the principals of those two schools allocated their teachers. So you'll notice in sixth grade core, there are eight teachers. In twenty-six, twenty-seven, we are thinking there will be two-hundred-and-thirty-one students. That's roughly twenty-eight-point-eight as the average class size, okay? Sixth grade encore, there are ten teachers with two-hundred-and-thirty-one students. That's roughly twenty-three-point-one students, twenty-three students in every class. Seventh grade core with nine teachers, that's roughly about twenty-five average class size. Seventh grade encore, that's twenty-two, twenty-three. And eighth grade core with nine teachers, that's about twenty-four average class size. And eighth grade encore would be roughly about twenty-two. If you compare that to last year's average class size, you will notice that at Gentry for sixth grade, we were, and at Metta View, we were a bit lower. But it is important to note that teachers can be reallocated in grade levels to drop the class size. Also, you can see seventh grade and eighth grade there. The overall average for last year was, for Gentry, was twenty-four-point-nine students. And for Metta View was twenty-six-point-two-five students. Okay, I'll invite Dr. Goins up. So one of the other tasks that we had in preparing for tonight was to really look at the academic programming benefits and challenges to consolidating Gentry and Metta View. So one of the big benefits that I spoke about just a minute ago was about taking our encore teachers. Currently, we share two encore teachers between the two schools. We would now have ten full-time encore teachers. And you saw evidence of what that would do to class sizes. It would bring the class size down because now you have those teachers on your campus from the time school starts to the time it ends, and every kid has access to them. This would give students additional programming options. And we also spoke about lowering the class sizes in some of those classes. One of the big benefits that we talked about as a committee is the potential of expanding high school course options across to all Surrey County Schools' middle school students. So now we're not just talking about a school benefit, now we're talking about a district benefit in that all middle school students could potentially have access to high school, all four high school courses in their middle school. Currently, Pilot Mountain Middle and Central Middle only have Math One. By possibly expanding these courses, all students could have Math One, World History, Earth and Environmental, and English One. And we're going to talk a little bit about how that might impact high school scheduling in the future and give students additional opportunities in their high school schedule. We also think that this will provide a smoother transition feeding into the high school. Currently, you have Gentry and Metta View students in the same district feeding into North Surrey. I think that if you spoke to the principals of those schools, they would tell you that that does create some initial conflict moving into the high school. They have to re-norm, get to know each other, playing on the same athletic teams, so on and so forth. So this would provide a smoother transition for those students. And then also, we're going to talk a little bit with you about the additional instructional time that a consolidated school could benefit from. Some challenges in combining schools is possibly phasing out the magnet program. As we spoke about, that really impacts about currently twenty-three students who are outside of the North District. So that would be something to consider. But again, if we are going to take the high school classes across the district to other middle schools, that would definitely help with that situation. Strategic scheduling to ensure balance in lower class sizes and to meet student needs is going to be pivotal in moving forward if that is the decision to move forward. Also, we currently house the Science Institute on the Metta View campus. So we would need to think about what that looks like moving forward as that, currently, we're using two classroom spaces for that institute. So there would need to be some forward planning for that. And then also, the expansion of high school courses across the district, we would really need to look at licensers, scheduling, who would teach those courses on our campuses. Okay?
So this gets into some of the specifics that Ms. Duplessis has already spoken of. So first off, we're looking at the daily schedule for Metta View. Of course, we have an arrival time, which is the same as Gentry. But if you go down to the instructional time, their classes do not start until eight-fifteen because we have shuttle buses bringing students to Metta View. And then they leave at two-forty-five to shuttle those students back to their home district. So you'll see that for instructional time, at Metta View, there's roughly six hours per day. Gentry's daily schedule, you'll see the arrival, and their instructional time starts at eight-oh-five, going until three PM. And so they have six hours and thirty minutes a day, which is approximately about ninety hours per year of more instructional time. So if you were to look at consolidation, we would want to transition to this schedule, which would mirror very closely to the other two middle school schedules for instructional time. So here is an example of high school course expansion. If students chose just one high school credit, and again, that could be Math One, it could be English One, World History, or Earth and Environmental, you'll see, and this is just a very basic schedule that have lots of options to move things around, you'll see their senior year down the bottom-left corner, they would finish their twenty-eight credits for graduation, which means they would have an additional, going from three over, they've got four different, well, actually, one, two, three, four, five different offerings, those blue X's right there of where they could pick up additional courses, meaning they could go to CCP courses, take additional college courses, internships. They'd have more opportunities there. If a student, if you go to the next slide, if they actually were to decide to take all four high school courses, you can see that they will actually finish up their twenty-eight credits their junior year, but then would have an additional, their entire senior year or throughout their high school career, to take those additional courses. So it opens up and expands. So with a high school expansion, all students in our middle schools would have those options once they entered into high school. And that's what the expansion of high school courses across the district looks like for every student in Surrey County.
So one of the things that we talked about is the additional instructional time changes with shuttle and transportation. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Llewellyn up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Duplessis. Good evening, board. Looking at transportation costs for the magnet shuttles, we have a bus that runs from Central Middle to Metta View Magnet Middle. It's about forty-two, a little over forty-two miles a day. And then the bus going from Pilot Mountain Middle to Metta View is almost sixty miles per day, a total of a hundred-and-two miles per day at a reimbursement cost of three dollars and sixty-six cents per mile. So total cost per day to run these shuttles is three-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and thirty-two cents. So at a hundred-and-seventy-five school days, based off the numbers from this school year, we're looking at a potential savings of a little over sixty-five thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So we do have, the Department of Transportation is actually, DOT, is conducting a traffic study right now for us. We don't currently have those results. It did take place from September the second through the fourth. But we hope to have those hopefully by the beginning of October. So just to see the feasibility of moving all those students to McKinney Road. Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name's Megan Park. I'm the EC director with Surrey County Schools. So I'll go over some information we have for our EC program looking at during this consolidation discussion that we're having. So as you see right now, for the current school year between Gentry and Metta View, we have a total of ninety-three students who are in the exceptional children's program, with thirty-one of those at Metta View and sixty-two, I mean, thirty-one at Gentry and sixty-two at Metta View. Currently, at Gentry, there are two general curriculum EC teachers and no EC teacher assistants. And then at Metta View, we have three general curriculum EC teachers and one extended content standards teacher with two teacher assistants in that classroom. I do want to note that these numbers do not reflect students who are speech-language impaired only and that the number of TAs is an estimate based on maintaining the one-to-four ratio for our self-contained classrooms that are, for the students that are on the extended content standards. And then as we look to twenty-six and twenty-seven, you see that number go down slightly for the total number of students. But we would still need the five, a combination of the five general curriculum EC teachers. There's a little more information on the next slide that'll detail that out. And then the one continued extended content standards teacher. The numbers for the students, as I kind of worked through the numbers and projected, and obviously, this is projected over time. We know students move, we know students come in and out of the EC program. So it is important to note that this is projected or predicted. The number for the extended content standards classroom is not really changing, like, it's kind of the same. So that is the reason for the number of ECTAs remaining the same. So then we see an additional dip in numbers for twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I do think it is important for us to know that even though that projection would show one less needed general curriculum EC teacher, that is not to say that need for that person is going to be picked up somewhere else. So it is not necessarily a reduction in the number of employees needed in the district. It's just reflecting those numbers there based on that possible consolidation. So for more of the details, looking at twenty-six, twenty-seven, as far as space goes, Metta View is set up for like a life skills classroom they already have there with washer and dryer and stove and access to those kind of skills that are needed for that curriculum. And so that is ready and available. And then the EC teachers that would be serving the general curriculum EC students. So we use, one of the models we use in middle school is co-teaching. And so those EC teachers are in the classroom. So they're less likely to need a full classroom and they could share an office space. But, and then as you go down to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, like I said, that general curriculum EC teacher number does drop by one. And so the shared office space may be impacted. There may be less space needed depending on that. And then for both years, there would be a need for a small space for a small group EC resource. And then again, with the already having a setup at Metta View for the life skills program is already there. Thank you.
Okay. Hello again. So let's talk about school nutrition for just a minute. I was afraid I wouldn't be able to see that that far away. I'm not, I never know. So we currently at Gentry have five employees. We have a manager, three six-hour people, and then one five-hour employee. And we calculate and assign labor based on mill equivalents. And that's a formula, we won't get into that tonight. But at Metta View, we currently have thirty labor hours. And so we would need, with the consolidated schools, we would need eight-hundred-and-twenty-five mill equivalents, which would be about forty-eight labor hours. So we think there could be a potential savings with personnel of about fifty-seven thousand that changes obviously every year. Annual repairs, if we only had one school, would be around ten thousand a year. And then we looked at inventory efficiency, won't get into that, but that's about how we break cases when we deliver food. And then the potential expenses, these are approximate because until we get into a construction project, we don't, we would not know the exact numbers for that. But we would need a larger walk-in cooler and freezer, that's around a hundred thousand. We do not have a dish machine at Metta View. That would be around eighty-five thousand. Two new serving lines would be around a hundred-and-twenty thousand. And the ones we currently have are twenty-five years old and could not be reused. We're kind of getting those patched up at the time. So our construction needs, Mr. Dixon, of course, will address those in a more detailed way. But we would just want to incorporate our can wash area into the building that's currently considered the outside of the building, which is interesting. that's currently considered the outside of the building, which is interesting. And then some site work for the cooler freezer stockroom, dish machine, and serving lines. Thank you.
Good afternoon again. About time for the seventh inning stretch. Okay. All right, we'll wrap this up. As far as, we'd all know, the school was constructed and opened in seventy-six. Dr. Easies went over the evaluation score that Mr. Powell has given us earlier, which was a forty-nine, which was adequate, but has numerous needs. I've listed some of those needs here. Roofing, main building is coming up here before long, needing a new roof and the walkway canopies. The building envelope, over the years, the precast concrete has absorbed moisture. We've had a lot of flaking, a lot of the rebar is beginning to rust. Far as, you know, the apparel that's concrete, ceiling, mortar pointing, and caulking and painting. Says restrooms, as far as Gentry's concerned, it is ADA accessible, but the restrooms are not wheelchair compliant. That's an issue that we've had since the school was opened, actually. I remember that when I was there. H V A C, numerous H V A C issues. We do have a new chiller that was lucky enough to get installed last year after the S R funding. But everything else in the building is fifty years old. That's just one piece, the air handlers, the piping, valves, controls. So we, we had to rest down on top of that school. Electrical, electrical plant is original, it is full. The switch gear is maxed out, not a lot of room for anything else, any kind of upgrades. Plumbing, same thing. We actually had some issues a couple of weeks ago, and we actually run some cameras and some pipe, and they're deteriorated underneath the slab. Elevator, same thing. It's one of our schools that does have an elevator. It's fifty years old, they do not make it anymore. Parts that we source are refurbished, and they're getting harder to find, very expensive. Long-term savings from this facility consolidation. I want you to, to notice in asterisks, these savings are only incurred if the Gentry Middle School site is not retained. Okay? So I've projected a five to ten-year need. One of those is paramount, is probably the roof, or actually is the roof. It, it's actually going on my books in about two years, start the planning process, probably three, three and a half years out. It's a nine hundred and ninety-four thousand at today's dollar. The H V A C, I mentioned earlier. Their next issue we're going to, that we've got to solve is the air handlers. This school has eight air handlers. They're the size of a large van. We've kept them in good shape over the years, but they're, they're giving way, they're starting to rust out. We can, we, we've been patching probably the last ten years. But I can see that coming to fruition in the next, next about ten years. We're going to have to do something. Paving, Gentry has a lot of curb and gutter issues, which in turn has resulted in soft pavement. We have a lot of paving, patching, things like that we have to do on a normal basis. So our long-term cost savings, if we do not retain the site, is about one point eight million dollars. Any questions? Okay? Annual maintenance cost savings from this consolidation. Again, this is if we do not retain Gentry. And I want you to know, when I put these numbers together, anything that we're not going to save, I took out of this slide here. For instance, you don't see anything about water, our water bill. Gentry uses about twenty-five thousand dollars a year for water. Those same kids are going to go to Metta View, so we're not going to see that savings. So anything like that has been taken out, paper products, anything that we, we know we're not going to save money on, I've done my best to pull it out of these numbers. So you can read along here of what this includes, but the total, total annual maintenance cost savings is a one hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Surrey County Schools' potential cost savings per year. Building grounds, one seventy-seven, two sixty-three. Human resources, five thirteen. Student nutrition, seventy-seven thousand. For a potential cost savings per year of seven hundred seventy-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Temporary and permanent space needed. Now, this is really depending on what we do. My job is to give the board all the information I can. So we're moving into temporary, temporary housing and the construction part of this. Just keep in mind that all this is fluid, so I'm just giving you the information. So at minimum, we're going to need two mobile units, two mobile units to facilitate these students. Forty-six classrooms would be ideal and would allow some extra space for our tenured teachers. Okay? So I'm throwing the temporary classrooms out here. Leasing, this was one of the first vendors that I got the estimate from. So I'm just going over how they run their show, basically. So this is probably the, the most that you'll, most it's going to cost us if we choose whichever direction we go, we have to have mobile units. So for this company, it takes three to four months to set these things up. Once you order them, get them set up, three to four months. Their minimum lease is twenty-six months. So a single unit to lease for twenty-six months is a hundred and three thousand dollars. Now, that includes them bringing the, the unit on-site, setting it up, underpinning, installing the steps, and installing the ADA accessible ramp. Okay? Also threw a double unit in here at a hundred sixty-eight thousand, but we really have to pay attention to what kind of classes we're going to have. And honestly, in Metta View, the classes we need is a chorus and agriculture. So if we put those back to back in a mobile unit, somebody's not going to be happy. So we're looking at a hundred and three thousand dollars for two units, basically. And I have, actually, I've actually got another estimate in since this, and it is lower. But this is, I wanted you to see the high end. And this does not include electrical, life safety, or communication. We will do that in-house. We've done a lot of that in the past. So I'm estimating that to be eight to ten thousand dollars. This is kind of a, this is a rendition of one of their classrooms, not a very good picture. So let's move on, Lucas.
So whether we lease for twelve months or twenty-six months, it's the cost still what we're seeing right here.
From that company, yes, sir. Mr. Wicker, the, the other company that I dealt with, they actually, they lease every how long you want to lease it. This was just the first one I put out here, so it's pretty much worst-case scenario, the most expensive, longest lease. This is a, a better rendition of his classrooms. You can see they're more, you know, longer rectangular. They've got the, the nice aluminum steps on the front and the ADA access ramp. Okay? Interior view, not much to see there, but I'll throw it in there so you can take a look. Permanent construction, timeline, and construction format. All of that will be up to the board. Our job is to give you the information, and these numbers, a little bit, I think the numbers are within, or within the ballpark. As far as the planning and all that, will be up to the board's pleasure. If we so choose, and the board moves with this project of consolidation, planning, design, and permitting will begin in November of twenty twenty-five, and the bid next August of twenty twenty-six. Construction will begin October twenty twenty-six, with a completion date of August twenty twenty-seven.
Estimated.
Very estimated. We got a, we got, we got a goal, that's our goal, that's what we're going to work toward if this project even moves forward. So we want to make sure that you had everything you need to work with. So I reached out to some contractors. About everybody for K one, construction right now is around three hundred dollars a square foot. Some is three hundred, three hundred dollars-ish per square foot, ranging on up to four hundred and twenty-five dollars per square feet. We're going to need six classrooms at eight four hundred square feet, at a cost of those estimates, two point five to three point six million. We're also going to need a weight room. Metta View does not have a workout facility. They are now currently using a, a smaller classroom. And that's going to make it work, but it is really not feasible for what it needs to be used for. So that cost is six hundred to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for twelve, two thousand square feet. And again, these numbers are very fluid.
Doug, what does that compare to the other middle schools' weight room size?
It's about half the size. Are you talking about the two thousand square feet? I'm sorry.
Does Pilot Middle?
Pilot's Middle is about the same size as, honestly, it's about the same size as Metta View.
Okay. Oh, as Metta View, as the current?
As the current Metta View, the small one. Gentry's current weight room is bigger. So our other additions that we're looking, looking at possibly is adding more space to our cafeteria. Looking at around twelve hundred square feet at three hundred and sixty thousand to five hundred and forty thousand dollars. And also looking to do some expanding in our kitchen, possibly, adding six hundred square feet for a price of one eighty to two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This is a, a early drawing that we done. Just outlining the current Metta View Middle School. And you can see each wing with a yellow-colored room. Those rooms were drawn in. That would be the proposed sites for classrooms. And the one at the top would be the, the workout facility.
So that basically would be two classrooms per great hall, one on the sixth, two on the seventh, two on the eighth?
Yes, sir. Estimated construction cost, basically using our numbers, three hundred to four twenty-five per square foot, three point eight to five, basically five point five million. With a tentative construction timeline of October twenty-six, twenty twenty-six to August twenty twenty-seven. Any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
So here we have some potential funding sources if construction does need to happen if consolidation occurs. Currently, in our lottery funds, in the Public School Building Capital Fund, we have an unallocated balance of three point six million dollars. Annually, we receive about an additional five hundred thousand distributed to our, that fund annually. Other lottery fund options would be the Repair and Renovation Fund. That can only be used for existing buildings for repair and renovation. And we currently have about three hundred and seventy-five thousand in that fund, so it's not quite as hefty. In our capital fund, we have an available fund balance as of the prior year's audit of eight hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. We do have a closer updated figure. I don't have the draft in hand of the most recent audit yet. However, it is above a million dollars now as of the end of the fiscal year. So I didn't want to put that exact number out here since I don't have the draft in hand, but it is more than that, eight hundred and fourteen thousand. And another potential funding source is the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant, which is also another D P I capital funding source through the lottery.
In conclusion, we're getting here close to the end. But this, we started this slide, just to kind of give you, that's the general statute. We've gone through most of that with this feasibility committee over the last two and a half months. We've tried to take a long look at this and tried to give you all the information we could possibly think of that would help you understand the total picture at Gentry, the total picture at Metta View, the total picture of those two combined. The second, next slide is really just, again, review of the information we presented tonight. We've looked at everything, including enrollment, and then these conceptual cost estimates. So in summary, this committee looked at everything, including the physical condition overall of where we, where our needs are, how building costs have increased. We've looked at a summary of declining population numbers across the county. And Surrey County's not a long, not a loan. If you look at North Carolina as a whole, the rural counties in North Carolina, eighty-five of the hundred rural counties have declining populations. So this is not something that, where Surrey County is an outlier. We are very much with everyone else. And what we see happening is many of our young people are moving to large urban areas. Large urban areas. And I think that's why it's so important, from an academic standpoint, that we do all we can to showcase what all the things we have in Surrey County that are great, all the opportunities, the, the jobs, the careers, family life. It's so important for us to showcase that, because our students are our greatest resource as they grow and become citizen leaders in our county. So thinking about next steps, I titled this slide eighteen eighty-five to beyond. Eighteen eighty-five is when Surrey County Schools was founded. And I just think about all the times that our school system has had to recalibrate, right-size, grow, dim, you know, think about the buildings we had to, to, to take care of, whether we renovated them or schools that we maybe had to move. And I think about this from a historical perspective. In the nineteen fifties, there was major change that happened in this county. Think about it, nineteen fifties, folks. The Board of Education in Surrey County closed all these community schools. Closed them and opened consolidated high schools in Pilot Mountain, in Dobson, and in, in Toast. They closed all these community high schools and integrated schools at the same time. And that's really one of the biggest challenges we're faced with right now. One of the challenges you're faced with, board members, and, and myself as superintendent, is thinking about this from the total perspective. This is a district process, and I know you've wrestled with this, just like I had, in trying to make sure all of our students' needs are met today, but neck, tomorrow, next year, in the next decade. So next steps, really, what, what's right-size look like for Surrey County now and in the future? None of us have a crystal ball. We're all trying to make really smart decisions and all trying to really predict based on the data that we have at hand today. Thinking about the challenge of renovating these three high schools, can that be done in phases? It will have to be done in phases to fit the funding that we have or, or don't have. And how can we really think about using smaller schools to reduce our operational cost? How can we gain efficiency in operational process? And then what other funding sources are available? So all of those things have been considered. Multiple strategies have been presented to you here tonight. And so in thinking about options and moving forward, certainly, we can, you can make the decision to do nothing and leave Gentry separate, leave Metta View separate, and continue going. That is, that is an option. You could consolidate those two schools next fall with the plan to add temporary classrooms. That's an option. You could consolidate the two schools the following year in a phased plan and try to do athletics first next year, and then construct those permanent classrooms, not even do temporary classrooms, and potentially consolidate the schools in twenty-seven, or potentially look at something beyond twenty-seven. Our committee has tried to really think about and ask good questions to each other and challenge all the content that's been put in tonight's presentation, really for you as a board, so that you will have as much information as needed to potentially think about next steps. And so I stand here tonight, ready to answer any questions you may have and take any direction from the, from the board as we think about next steps for the feasibility committee. So I will pause and take questions.
That's a lot of information.
It is a lot, and I wish we could have made it a lot shorter. And I promise you, we've cut this down. But this is a, this is a lot of information to really process when you think about size, scope, and impact.
First of all, thank everybody that's. First of all, thank everybody that's worked on this. I know you have all, all the staff, the community members, the board members, uh, that's a lot of work I know that's went into this, so we'll start. If you guys have some questions for Dr. Reeves or not? I know you and Mr. Badger, Mr. Whitaker?
Well, as far as, um, options, I know a lot of scenarios was, uh, considering selling the Gentry, uh, school property. Uh, any, was any consideration been made so far for repurposing the facilities there at that location?
Our committee did not discuss re, well, there were questions that were asked of me, and I said, no decision's been made. So we really focused on just consolidating the two schools, not trying to get the cart before the horse or take a step and be presumptuous. So we have not really thought about repurposing the building or, or thinking about options. That's something we could do if directed by the board, but we really didn't, we didn't talk about that and really dive deeply into that because we felt like all of our attention needed to be put on the academics, the needs, and potential cost, uh, that it would take just to do, just to do this merger.
Would that be something that we'd wanna at least look at and consider?
Well, for, this is me personally. I think if we move forward with a consolidation, to do anything but renovate the school for the kids. To do anything besides renovate it for the school, for the children to be educated there would be sort of misprioritized in my mind personally. You wanna ask questions? You got anything?
Yeah, so the number one question I had was, we, we've talked about this in the past, about the use of lottery funds for the construction aspect of it. Obviously, based off of the numbers that we presented tonight, uh, for construction cost as well as what we currently have in our lottery fund balance. We would ultimately exhaust our funds in that balance. Um, so the question that I would have is, what would that look like for future needs across the county? Uh, when it come to additional needs, whether it be in North District, East, or Central District, without those lottery funds?
So, I think, based on Finance Committee, Buildings and Grounds Committee, we would need to prioritize what those needs are. I would wanna bring Doug Dixon to the table along with Laura to really think about long-term. We've not accessed these, these lottery funds in quite some time, and you can see that's why they built up. The county has given us a little bit extra on the pure, per pupil side on capital. And I think this past year, we got something over, uh, maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars more. Doug has a calendar in which we do roofs. Um, we, we're on a cycle. Certainly, we don't get as much as we would like to keep the renovation going and keep things up to speed. But I would think long-term, we just need to take a, a hard look at where those funds could be used. Uh, and then make decisions on what's, what is our priority. Uh, we haven't spent those monies, not knowing that this project was coming, but really thinking about what large projects we could, we could use those funds for. And I think that's probably the best way to use them, although we know we have lots of small projects. And roofs, you can count on a half million dollars. It, it's kind of a minimum dollar amount when you start repairing roofs, but certainly that's so important because we don't wanna get in the shape where, uh, we are severely backlogged with roofs, uh, to the point that we have other problems that could enter in our buildings that, uh, really, uh, could really put us behind the eight ball. So I don't have a real good answer, other than to say, we just need to sit down and look at it really hard with Doug. And I think take a long look at this long-range facility plan that Beal's put together. I think you're gonna see most of this stuff as renovation. If you did use some of that funds, I mean, we've got paving needs that we could, we could spend a large portion of money just on paving.
Dr. Reeves, just a, a quick one. We, we've talked about the consolidated, if we did it, would be about six hundred and fifty students. If we build the additions for six hundred and fifty students and one of those other things we talked about that we don't know now happened, birth rates go up, people moving in. How comfortable are we that we've got enough cushion in the construction of those six classrooms that we could absorb some of that? Versus, are we just, are we looking at just getting to six fifty? And, and we know after about three years, it's six fifty's gonna be, looks like it's coming down with the projection.
So I go back to the, there's twenty-six core teachers. When Ms. Du Plus C put the slide up, twenty-six core currently, we'll need twenty-six, and that's based on twenty-six, twenty-seven data, right? So that twenty-six is gonna need to increase. Uh, we need two encore classes today. If you were to consolidate next August, we can't start without two encore classes, but that means every other classroom is full. Every other resource room is full. I mean, we, we'll have maximum capacity a hundred percent of the time of the day. That really does put some constraints on the building. I, I feel pretty confident you need four classes at a minimum and six gives you a cushion. Even when you decline enrollment, go from six fifty to six hundred, you still need some extra classes potentially for itinerary. Teachers, for a, a meeting room, possibly for a parent meeting. It could be a small group meeting. You may need resource spaces for our exceptional children. I think you need some space that's extra where every single classroom is not used every single moment of the day. So I think six is probably the number we feel good about. We might could make four work, but six certainly gives us a little bit of extra cushion. But you got to have the two classes for encore. And regardless if that number goes from six fifty to five eighty, five ninety, we don't see the number of encore teachers decreasing unless we start making programming changes. So that, you're just gonna see a s- little bit smaller class size, but, uh, we know kids don't come in these nice, uh, numbers of twenty or twenty-five.
We, we've learned that from our ADM going down. Yeah, we, we don't, they don't come out of, just take a class out. It's three out of this class and two out of that one, so you still need the same number of core teacher.
That's right, that's right.
Dr. Reeves, you all, you may have answered this, but I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding it correctly. So the forecasts that are put together on enrollment, that is Bill Powell's numbers as well as Mr. Placie putting together the kids in seats now.
Bill Powell's numbers are not based on kids in seats. They're based on demographers. He's, he's used the Office of State Budget Management. That's one office. There's another office that comes out of NC State that does a lot of school demography and really planning. Um, I don't know the name of that office, but he's used a two or three different sources to really forecast his data. The slide that Ms. Du Plus C showed you was actual kids in seats. We have looked at Mr. Powell's data, and I think I can give some credibility to it just based on the fact that he, he predicted a decline in twenty fourteen. And so we've seen that number, uh, almost run parallel to where we're at now. Uh, the other factors that Mr. Powell can't predict, in twenty fourteen, we didn't know what would happen with charter schools. Remember, charter schools are capped at a hundred. There's over two hundred charter schools in North Carolina now. There were no student vouchers in twenty fourteen. Uh, there were no tax credits at forty-two hundred dollars per student that parents could be eligible for. So those are two major political factors that he couldn't predict. And so we have held our own, but we certainly know that school choice is alive and well in North Carolina.
Right, and the reason I ask that is, I'm not questioning the validity of Mr. Powell's numbers by any stretch, but I'm just saying that, you know, on paper financially, uh, it's a, it's a pretty solid argument, uh, of the cost savings that would happen. But this isn't just numbers. I mean, this is a community. This is a school that's been there for fifty years, and I wanna make sure that whatever decision that I make is based off of absolute. We feel very confident on the numbers, and we have sourced it in multiple places. It was my reason for that. Mr. Scales would ask another question that I had about the, the funds. But one question that I have a big concern over is the staff. And I know that we had the core teachers, we wouldn't lose any teachers. Some classified staff, we may see a reduction there. But do we, do we predict possibly that, I think there's forty openings now in the county? That we feel pretty comfortable that if we move forward with this, that we would be able to potentially offer these people something else? And it may not be in a location that they want, but we're not putting people out of a job.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I can stand here without a doubt and tell you, I feel one hundred percent guaranteed that we can make sure these people have a job in another school or possibly in this school. It might not be that job, it, it might be another job, but we would, we would work hard, especially given more time. Uh, and I use the example, we just came out of, uh, the COVID funding, ESER funds. We cut three million dollars. We moved sixty people in different positions across the county. Uh, we made sure people were, uh, positioned well that have been loyal to our school system. Our employees are our greatest asset, and we wanna make sure we continue to take care of them. So we would work really hard to, uh, to find them a place, a home. And the other thing, a lot of people don't realize, but we have a transfer policy. So people, every year, we survey our staff. We want people to be happy. We want people to work in places that are, uh, places they wanna be, but also places that, uh, hopefully are convenient to their home and their community. I think that's one of the great things about Surrey County Schools is we are a community school system where our employees take great pride in our student success and in the success of their school. And that's something a lot of districts, uh, struggle, especially in some of our larger areas. So that's really, uh, I think, uh, a secret to our success is our employees' pride that they take in our schools.
I don't have any other questions?
If I could, I'd just like, just to make a quick comment, and, and Mr. Hutchins and I have been through the, and you think, you think this was long. We had a meeting one night with four hours, uh, that committee did to talk about these things. So because we really tried to go in-depth and I, and the individuals that were there, um, this is gonna be an emotional decision either way. It, it's, there's gonna be passion. And I have to tell you that when this all started as a discussion, I said, not no, but I won't use the term, no, 'cause this happened to my school. I was the first eighth grade class at Gentry fifty years ago, and yeah, that tells you how old I am. But I think the numbers we've looked at, we have to at least consider it. I really, I, I would like, I'd see that school sitting there fifty years from now. But in order to provide the, the programs and the education our kids deserve, do we continue to spend seven hundred thousand dollars a year on a building? Or do we put that money into programs we can offer? You know, more of tho- those four classes we talked about to those eighth graders that can take high school classes and be more prepared when they get to high school. So I've struggled with this, I really have, um, because I do believe it's my school, and, and there's things that, but we were able to pick the, the mascot, Patriots. We were able to pick the colors because we were the first eighth grade class. Uh, it's tough, but, but I do believe that we at least have to, at least see what the public thinks about it, uh, uh, through a public hearing and find out, should we go for it or not? And I would like to throw something out, something that popped in my head the other day, and you brought it up about the facility that's there now at Gentry. I mean, everybody's talked about keeping it or selling it, giving it away. It's fifty acres there, so my understanding, right, thir- thirty-five?
Yeah, approximately.
I don't know that there's not a way that we could maybe keep part of it and give part of it back to the commission. I don't know that it has to be an all or nothing, which could help both.
I'd sort of like to see the funding of Metta View in, in exchange for something if we did something.
I would hope for fifty acres, we'd get more than that, but anyway. Anyway, I just wanna say that, 'cause I, 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 there's been a lot of discussion out there and people that don't know a lot of the facts, and, and these meetings have been open to the public. Um, and so we, I would hope, hope that we can have some good discussion from our community about it and understand what we've presented tonight. And gosh, it's hard, but we've gotta take the emotion out of it and make the right decision for our kids for now, and that school lasted fifty years. So the decision we make in this process is gonna last twenty-five to fifty more years, I hope. We're not just talking about next year, next week, five years down the road, so just wanted to say that.
Dr. Reeves, one more question, and then I'll, I'll ask you guys if we have a consensus to do a public hearing, uh, or if we wanna kill it here. But if we move forward, is Gentry in your all's estimation in the shape that it could stand to be occupied another year and not do this until the year after to eliminate the need for mobile units?
Yes.
Because that's a big thing. I hate the idea of mobile units.
And we, the, the committee did discuss that, and I think that was, that was a big, and it came from the teachers and the parents and the athletic directors out and that made that, asked that question.
Does anybody have any other questions I would like to ask before I ask if there's a consensus to move forward with a public hearing? Now, that being said, that does not mean that a decision is made. That means it is merely a public hearing, uh, because we work for you all, and so we wanna hear from the public. And then after that, we would make a decision. So with that being said, would somebody like to make a motion? Go ahead, Mr. Hutchins.
So, uh, so it was mentioned a few minutes ago about the weight room addition, and was it comparable to the one at Pilot? Is, is that twelve hundred that we're talking about adding?
Two thousand, two thousand.
Two thousand, okay, two thousand, that we're adding at Metta View equal to the one at Pilot, or is that an updated facility?
Yeah, I, I would have to ask Doug to go, go do some measurements, but I would think that's bigger than the one at Pilot or Central Middle. There's, there's some recommendations that we can look at from the Department of Public Construction for middle schools. And, and really, that's, that's kind of where we're looking at those numbers. And Doug, I don't know if that two thousand square foot number, where that came from, was that just the space of that little box? From DPI?
I think it was just talk about two thousand square feet. It don't, it doesn't have to be two thousand square feet.
If we got, if we got to that point, then we could.
Yeah, exactly. Oh, you're gonna have, i- if, if you, there's a lot, lot more discussions to happen before we get down to those kind of de- level of details. But that's certainly something the board would have, uh, full input on.
And I think we have to consider too, six hundred and fifty students versus four hundred. You know, it's gonna have to be a little bit bigger.
Okay, gentlemen, I will ask for a motion to either kill it or to move forward with a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that, uh, we move forward with the scheduled public hearing to consider Gentry Med- Gentry Middle School and Metta View Magnet School consolidation.
Okay, I have a motion. Second by Mr., we have a motion by Mr. Scales, a second by Mr. Badger.
Both, yeah.
And Mr. Hutchins.
And Mr. Whitaker too, he was thinking it, I seen it.
Any further discussion, gentlemen? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll move to a public hearing. Thank you all again for putting that together.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a request of those listening, watching, when you find out when it is, please come. We want input from the community. This is not, five of us don't own any school systems. Everybody in this county does. Uh, I hope, you know, you saw what I have coming up through it tonight here with three little ones, so it's, it's important to me, but we need to know everybody. What do you think, please? Thank you.
All right, moving right along, policy updates that will be sitting here for a thirty-day review. The policies are all listed there. Everything was required with the exception. The caveat to that was there was a couple of options that were given on policy forty-three eighteen, uh, use of wireless communication devices. There was an option A and an option B. Option A was, um, adding language to our current policy that we have. That was the recommendation of the consensus of the committee was to use our current policy. And then on policy forty-fourty seventy-three-ten, uh, was staff-student relations. Uh, there is a draft to add the following verbiage. No employee shall permit a student to reside with the employee either permanently or temporarily unless, with the five bullet points. The student is a child, a stepchild, or other family member of the employee. The employee is the guardian or other legal custodian of the student as verified by court order or other judicial decree. The student has been placed with the employee by the Department of Social Services or other governmental agency. The student is residing with the employee pursuant to a power of attorney executed under North Carolina General Statute, subsection one fifteen C dash thirty-six, three sixty-six-three, and approved by school administration. Or the student is a foreign exchange student who has been placed with the employee by the organization, by an organization or agency recognized and approved by Surrey County Board of Education. Now, we did put in this caveat. The policy does not prohibit an employee's permitting a student, not included in the above exceptions, from residing with the employee on an emergency basis, not exceeding seventy-two. Not exceeding seventy-two hours when necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the student. Within the seventy-two hour period, the employee shall notify his or her immediate supervisor And shall contact appropriate governmental agencies and/or the student's family members to arrange suitable housing for the student. And, uh, Mr. Johnson had, thank you for constructing that, and that was a consensus of the committee as well to add that. So is there any questions on policies or anything for thirty day rest?
You said on the cell phone usage, that was, uh, option A.
Option A. Yeah, that was the consensus of the committee.
Uh, I, and I, I read through the, uh, skimmed through them and they, they all make sense to me, but on, on this one, on the staff-student relations.
Mm-hmm.
Did the committee discuss, for example, if a teacher has a daughter that has a friend and they want to have a sleepover? You know, this says temporary or permanent. To reside, is there anything here that says, you know, I don't want to get so strict on it. That they can't ask their friends to come over and spend the weekend with.
No, I, I don't think that that would, that wouldn't constitute this at all.
Okay.
Am I correct, Mr. Johnson?
Not residence, that's a guest.
Right.
Okay. Well, when it says reside, you know, there's a lot of different definitions, I guess, of what reside would mean. Okay, thank you.
All right, gentlemen, I'm looking for a recommendation to put these policies up for thirty day review to be voted on in October.
I would recommend we do that.
I have a motion by Mr. Whitaker. Second by Mr. Hutchins, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and we are up to superintendent's report, is that right?
Board members, just a couple of quick reminders. First of all, I want to say thank you to all those that served on the feasibility committee and continue to serve. They have been a joy to work with. So as you can see, a lot of information went into tonight's meeting, but a lot of hard work. So I want to thank all those people. Last Friday, we had a great Save Promise Summit at Surrey Community College. Save Promise stands for Students Against Violence Everywhere. Every school in Surrey County has a Save Promise team. And really, these kids are doing great work, building positive culture, really just trying to set a good example, be a friend. And, um, in the next week or two, you're going to see a campaign that they're launching called Start With Hello. What's it mean to start with hello? We're trying to teach kids to, to create friendships by, by simply saying hello. And starting a conversation. And so our Save Promise teams, Jody, um, Southern, thank you for your leadership there. So you may see that in your schools or you may see it on billboard signs, but I just want to say, um, hats off to these students. They were excited, um, and, uh, did a lot of good work. So, uh, you, you'll see that and hear that. Uh, strategic plan, as you know, board members, we've worked really hard, uh, excited to start the year. Uh, goal one, student achievement. Goal two, supportive, safe, secure environments. Goal three, engaged employees. Goal four, family community engagement. And goal five, operational effectiveness. I think we went over every one of those goals in this committee report tonight. Uh, but certainly, uh, a lot to be proud of as we think about, uh, the work ahead with Surrey County Schools. A lot to be proud of with our employees and I'm very, uh, thankful for their leadership and all they do to take care of our kids. It's really been a great opening to the school year. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll move right along to the consent items. Those include the general personnel report, student transfers, field trip approval, EC contracts approval, Surrey Friends of Youth MOU. And the Dobson SRO MOU. Um, just like to say that we really appreciate the town of Dobson and the partnership that we've had with them. With the SRO, um, and this is just solidifying and, and, uh, legalizing, I guess you could say, the, an actual MOU with them. But we really appreciate it. So gentlemen, I'm looking for a motion.
I think a motion.
Motion by Mr. Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Badgett, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Few acts and items, moral free at Flat Rock Elementary School. And I guess we'll knock out two with one, and then we have Flat Rock Youth Foundation request. Ms. Mark.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I come, um, first to ask for permission to plant a, um, it, we originally said magnolia tree. And we have changed that to Japanese maple just for, um, the cleanup, um, a lot less maintenance. Um, and less messy. Mary Kilby, uh, was a longtime teacher at Flat Rock Elementary. She was there, um, I know for at least ten years. She is beloved in our community and she recently passed away in July of this year. Um, so I have been asked by a group of teachers who taught with her, um, to seek approval To plant a tree, Japanese maple in our front drive. Um, in one corner of Flat Rock, there is a tree in a hole that's about to fall over. Directly across from that, there are two smaller ones, um, that are notwithstanding, uh, wind and, um, such. So we have, Doug's came out, he's looked at it. We would like to take down those three trees and then just plant the one, um, in honor of Mary Kilby.
All right, fantastic.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Hutchins.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Whitaker, any further discussion?
I would just say, uh, a new Mary, Mary put her heart and soul into that school and everybody there did love her.
Yes.
I think this would be a great tribute to her.
Fantastic. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to ask my guest from, uh, Flat Rock Youth Foundation To join me, um, as we continue presenting, um, some requests for our youth foundation. And we'll let you introduce yourself and then we'll get started.
All right, uh, good evening, board. Thank you for having us. Uh, I'm Jacob McCone. I am the president of the Flat Rock Youth Association.
Hello, I'm Dr. Janet Drone. I am the treasurer of Flat Rock Youth Association.
So we have, um, some requests. Um, some of these have already been approved. And we are just making some minor changes to them. So the first request that we have Is to move our little smaller outbuilding, um, to a location more accessible by the concession stand. And then we would replace where the small building is with a much larger building that has been donated Um, to the Flat Rock Youth Foundation. Um, Mr. Dixon has been out and we have marked those locations and he has checked that out. Um, any other information you want to add about the buildings?
Yeah, I'll say just a little bit. Uh, over this last year, we've done a lot to try to improve, um, the atmosphere at Flat Rock. Uh, you know, there's a lot of passion around Flat Rock right now, and so we want to try to capitalize on that while we can because the kids deserve it. Um, at one point early in the year when we first started, the kids were getting picked on by other kids in the county Because the facilities were not as, as nice. So I think we've done a really good job of trying to improve that. But in the process of improving, you've got a small little storage building where we need just a little bit of extra space to keep maintaining that.
I just want to say, I was there a couple of weeks ago, maybe last week. I was really impressed with the work you've done on that concession stand. Um, it looks, uh, night and day difference from what it, uh, once looked like. And I was just back there, uh, maybe six months prior before we cut that tree and did the tree work, so great job.
Thank you. And, you know, we had a lot of help, Mr. Dixon and, and, um, the previous principal, uh, Allison York. She really was there to support us and we're looking forward to our new partnership here. But, uh, there's a lot of work that's went on and a lot of people that have dedicated their time and efforts to it. So we did put together a presentation that we hope you get a chance to look at that will show you at some point some of the things that we've done.
Absolutely.
We, we looked at it, we've all looked at it. I'm, uh, I'm, Mr. Dixon is good with everything. Um, I just appreciate what you all are doing in the community, uh, as volunteers. You don't have to do that and, uh, I appreciate that. And I know the rest of the board does as well. I will make a motion that we approve what all you have brought to us. Uh, appreciate you sitting here during the whole facility, uh, presentation.
Absolutely.
Uh, but I'll make a motion that we approve as presented.
Second it.
Second by Mr. Badgett, any further discussion?
I'd too like to echo your, uh, appreciation for the work you do in the youth foundation. I, uh, was able to participate somewhat, not with the youth foundation, but with youth sports and, and coping community. And, uh, I know what kind of time investment that you have in it and, uh, appreciate your working in that area.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing what it looks like.
Okay. Mr. Freeman, East Surrey High School baseball facility upgrades.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. Um, coming here tonight just to ask for your permission, uh, for us to begin A seating and safety renovation project, uh, at Berry Hall Field. Um, it's been something that's kind of been in the plans and in the works for close to three years. Um, we got some drawings, architectural plans done, looked at the cost of that. Um, then we started the fundraising process for that. Currently, we've raised probably about a hundred and ten thousand dollars put towards that project. Um, two, two and a half years ago, when we first were looking at this, the estimated cost was around two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We were looking at doing these tiered seats, uh, completely in concrete. Um, obviously, construction costs have gone up, it's been the theme of the night. And, uh, the estimate that we got in May is that the cost has risen to three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Fundraising, uh, isn't keeping up with inflation. And so we kind of went back to the drawing board to look at some, uh, other alternatives. Uh, and rather than doing it in complete concrete, we actually looked at the possibility of doing retaining wall blocks. Um, so we got, uh, Jim Robinson and JM Hardscapes to come in. He works, uh, with lots of different businesses, corporations Doing retaining walls for structures. Uh, came in, gave us an estimate, and we can do the retaining wall part of the seating, the tiered, uh, seating For about fifty-nine thousand dollars. We still would need some concrete cost, um, for a walkway to connect From the first base dugout to the third base dugout and go around the backstop. Um, we, we have some safety issues with, uh, no stairs currently on that hill. Um, and there's been some concern over that over the past few years with people trying to navigate from the concession stand down the hill to the dugout areas. Uh, so we're estimating fifty to sixty thousand dollars for those. In total, we expect to spend a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and we have most of those funds raised. Um, being financially prudent, um, it makes a lot more sense for us to go to this, um, The, this new route with the hardscape and the, the retaining wall blocks while giving us a, the capacity to triple our seating area At the field, building into the bank. Uh, Mr. Whitaker can attest, he's been there several times over the past years watching his grandson play.
Figure out where to stay and we're good.
Yeah, it really is, it really is. Um, but this will be a great upgrade to the facility. And it'll, it'll allow us to use our fundraising over the next three years to go ahead and target some other big projects. We've got two or three other big projects, um, that we envision trying to complete over the next three to five years. Uh, and it just is a lot more financially prudent to do this. So just coming today and asking for your permission to begin this project.
Okay. Mr. Dixon, everything good?
Yes, sir. I think we did a, a welcome additions to our baseball facility. Uh, one thing I ask is when we get the final drawings. Just to make sure the permitting is correct. I'm sure they will, but, um, yeah, I'd like to see the final drawings.
Yeah, we've got, we had to ma, transition the original plans from concrete over to this new system. Uh, it's going to have to take a little bit of tweaking and adjusting. We have a preliminary plan in place. Um, but Pilot, uh, surveyors and engineers are finishing those up as we speak. And within the next week, we should have that completed. We can get those to Mr. Dixon. He then can submit those to DPI to get approval from DPI. And then once that has concluded, um, then we can get our permits and hopefully begin construction, ideally sometime maybe in October.
Okay. So you'll still have, uh, retaining walls, uh, you know, stair steps?
It would be a stair steps, like tiered seating. We'll probably not sod. We're going to look at for the top, putting, um, either gravel. Maybe come in and put like an epoxy so that it stays firm, or we've talked about putting, um, some type of pavers for the top of the tiers. And that actually gives us the ability at some point in the future, if we ever do raise the funds or want to go back and do concrete, we can do those for each of the tiers as well. Um, but in addition to the seating portion, uh, we would also be putting in the stair step, uh, to connect the current field house And concession stand area down to the dugout area for everyone.
Okay.
So, uh, on the artist's rendering, it doesn't show it, but I think it does on the plans. You'd have stairs on each end?
Stairs on each end of the tiered seating, yes.
Right.
And then we'd have an additional staircase with rail that would go from the concession stand area down, uh, down to the dugouts. Um, we would also make sure that from the concession area, there's ADA handicap ramp accessibility That would be flowing into that while being in compliant with, uh, slope.
Okay, with, with the twenty-one inch rise, you know, that you would.
And as part of this, we're going to have to remove the current bleachers at the top, which they're getting old and rusty anyway, uh, and remove that concrete pad. But that would allow for us to have the appropriate space that we need, uh, to get those tiers in and also get the ramp in.
So was it three or four years ago, Dr. Reeves, we were down there and looked at it with you for the money, the, the, uh, athletic fund money we got from the state? And identified it as a need, but we just knew at the time it was too much and we couldn't. So this is basically what we were talking about then?
Yes.
Behind the baseball.
A version of that, yes, okay.
And this is land that we own, not land that we.
Yes, it's owned by Surrey County Schools, only Surrey property.
Not the town of, of that.
Correct.
All right, gentlemen, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Whitaker.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hutchins, any further discussion? Um, I have no other questions. I just want to say the work that the boosters and the foundation does just continues to amaze me. Paul Mountain, thank y'all.
Yes, we're very, very blessed.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, last, no, two more acts and items. Intercom replacement bid approval, Mr. Dixon.
Good evening.
Frequent flyer tonight, Arthur Dixon. We might need a fourteenth inning straight here in a minute.
Yeah. Just need to get him a cup of coffee.
That's what I knew, right there. Um, as far, what I'm talking about next is intercom replacement at our three high schools. I wa, I was asked back in January after we started having issues, um, at East Surrey To look into this, our high school situation because it was, at the same time, it also come up That they were not operating very well with our, uh, statistics system. Um, so, uh, we worked through the East Surrey issue thanks to Mr. Gillespie. Uh, that intercom system had a software glitch, not a software glitch, a software issue That was making us vulnerable for, uh, an internet attack. Am I right? Had the right word, Lucas? On, with, with vulnerable.
I like it.
So, uh, anyways, they done a great job doing a workaround to make that system work. It was just dead in water. And what had happened is that Lucas had implemented a upgrade in our system to look for things like this, and it caught it. And it shut this intercom system down. Uh, we couldn't, we didn't know what happened to start with, but we finally figured it out and he got it working for us. So on the back end of that, that system needs to be replaced. It's a bogan system, uh, bogum quantum. Three weeks later, I get a, a letter from Bogan Corporation. Our other systems at the other two high schools are called Bogan MultiCom Systems. So they informed me that they were at end of life. They would no longer be doing support, uh, no longer, uh, producing parts. No longer selling parts. So it all, it kind of came to a perfect storm. So I was asked to do some research and, uh, get us pricing on intercoms for the three high schools. So I sit, talked to several companies. I did get three interested vendors, um, done individual walkthroughs. Right before the bids opened, I had one to back out. So we have two bids. So before we disclose anything, my, I guess, my question to the board would be, do we want to use two bids? Or do you want me to redo the RFP and send it back out?
What is the projected cost?
A little over two hundred thousand.
It's over two, it's over two hundred thousand, sir. It's over two, it's over two hundred thousand, sir.
Well, I, I, I think you could go on the two if, if you, if you, if you made a good faith advertisement and only, only received the two bids.
So how hard was it to find these three? Did you have to go out and beat the bushes to find them?
Yes, it was extremely difficult. A lot of people were very busy. Uh the ones that did bid, letting it right up front, that they'd have to work it in. Um and I think that's why they pulled out. I just, they just said it wasn't a good fit for them at this time. So we got two, what I think or be qualified uh vendors. So before I disclose any information, I want to make sure that which, which direction was, direction we were want, wanted to go. Whether we want to beat the bushes again and send it back out, or do we want to move forward?
How confident are you that you could find that third person with the difficulty you had originally?
Um it was tough, you know.
If you don't think you can find it, there's no need wasting your time.
Well, that's kind of the way I see it, but you never know. Uh I've made a lot of phone calls and emails.
Ms. Neely, where would funding come from this?
We could either use the fund balance in our capital fund or the repair and renovation lottery, which has a balance of um approximately three hundred and seventy five thousand, but this would be a qualified expense according to the policy manual.
That's the one we couldn't use.
Exactly, if we used, if we used it for things like this, with the balance would be lower for the addition that may have you.
You know, when we first discussed this, uh were, were we not talking about eighty thousand dollars a high school? So this is a little bit less. I mean, the bid came in less, so because of that, I'd be comfortable going with the two bids.
Would you like to make that motion?
I wanted to hear Mr. Johnson say good faith.
Well, one, one question I had, if we, if we're gonna be improving the high schools, one high school and then another high school, would they be able to facilitate uh or accommodate uh extending uh the sound system? Or I just wonder how that's gonna impact.
Or could we reuse what we're doing here?
How that's gonna impact.
Yes, sir, I can answer it for you. Part of my specifications was that whatever system we got, we'd work with our current system, which is an, a analog system and a IP-based system, a digital system, if we work due to construction in the future. Uh and e- both of these systems that you see that gave bids are, will do that. So if we do any expansion, we do any building, this intercom system will work with any, any of the new te- newer technology. As well as allowing us not to have, have the a- added expense of changing all the speakers, all the wiring, everything right now, so.
That's what I was gonna ask. So this does not include in, in changing the speakers, it's basically just changing the guts of it?
Yes, sir.
To feed the signal to the speaker?
These systems will work with our current uh components.
Well, I'm not gonna put Ms. Holloway on the spot. But uh we could ask Ms. DePlessis or anybody from, from the high school principal's point of view, the need for this to happen.
We, we constantly, oh, sorry. We constantly have to work on our intercom system. We, we have issues. And um Mr. Dixon has been wonderful to come and help and Mr. Gillespie as well, especially where synergics is concerned. But we've had multiple issues with our intercom system, which is a safety concern.
And we just spent all this money for the, for synergics and everything else, and then if our intercom systems are not working, we're sort of shooting ourselves in the foot.
Dr. Reese, how, how comfortable are you taking it out of that repair and renovation fund?
I don't think it necessarily matters. That we're gonna get about four hundred thousand dollars a year in the R and R money. That's a reoccurring um revenue stream. You've got funding, I guess the concern, one concern I have, R and R is gonna take a little bit longer. Your fund balance, you have it now. We can move forward tomorrow. Uh if you go R and R, there's a form we have to fill out, there's an application we have to go through. And we have to uh submit that to the county commissioners. They have to approve that. And then there's some work that Laura would have to do with the uh OSBN office.
It is, um it's gonna delay it possibly a couple months um getting all that done, so.
So what's your recommendation?
You asking me?
I'm asking you.
I would take it out of fund balance to, to expedite because you have synergics right now that we're already in the pipeline, trying to get that program underway um with install dates. And I'm not sure what these guys can do either, but I, I don't think we want to delay it any longer with the synergics program that you're already uh, that you're already, that you have already purchased. You have over eight hundred thousand dollars in that capital fund balance. I think, I think we're comfortable enough. You could leave a six hundred thousand dollar balance and feel comfortable. That'd be my recommendation.
I will add that in the bid packet from the lowest bidder, his schedule was to install one per month beginning in October.
Okay, so by the end of twenty five, we could have them all?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, you know me, I don't like to spend money, but uh this is imperative. And uh I'm gonna make a note, a recommendation and a motion that we move forward with the responsible lowest bidder on the two bids that came in.
Out of fund balance.
Out of fund balance.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Whitaker. Any other further discussion?
Yeah, I, I do have uh a question, Doug. So you stated that it this will be just the cost to replace pretty much the brains of the intercom system.
That's correct.
That would replace our existing, keep speakers the same, keep wiring the same. However, if we transition to new construction, we would incur additional cost to replace.
Speakers, possibly some of the wiring, upgrade some of the wiring. Yeah, but, but the brain will be there.
Would this uh also include the cost associated with making sure synergics is up and running appropriately? Cause I know that was the big issue with synergics, that our current intercom system wasn't compatible with it.
Correct, yes. When I spoke to, the last time I spoke with synergics, they were needing this upgrade done before they even started. Uh so they can make sure that this new system would work with their uh program.
Okay, anything else?
I, I, and again, I, I don't wanna bring up old memories, but it's sort of appropriate that we're sitting in a building that we voted not to paint last summer because we were being real tight with money. And now we're, we're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars on this, but this is a safety issue to me. So I just want to point that out because there'll be some that'll say, well, you didn't paint my building, why can you do this? And it needs it, believe me. Looking around, it needs it, but uh I think this is a safety issue.
It is. It's paramount.
Safety over aesthetics.
I mean, the communication of a threat uh is paramount.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Last one.
I think he'll be up here for this too, probably, won't you? Needs based grant, capital fund application?
I think Dr. Reese.
I think he's gonna run to the back row. Find a cup of coffee somewhere.
All right, Dr. Reese. Good, board members, uh your last agenda item tonight is a very important agenda item. This is the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant that for the fourth year in a row has come out and given us about thirty day, a thirty day turnaround. And so in this thirty days, I'm asking tonight for your direction on the project. And then we have to receive, uh the local match is a five percent match. That has to be approved by the county commissioners. And we have to get their signature and our board chair's signature on the application. Uh and this grant has to be submitted on October third. So, quick turnaround, and so tonight on September the eighth, we're here to really talk about our needs. Obviously, we spent a long time talking about needs, and I think uh we know first and foremost our highest needs in this school system are our three high schools. Um last spring, I had the opportunity to travel to DPI with Doug and Robert. And we sat down with two DPI officials that uh basically administer the grant applications, review the grant applications, award the grant applications. So we had over an hour, hour and a half with these two gentlemen at DPI to really review last year's grant application, previous year's grant applications. So in tonight's uh agenda or a packet, I've given you basically my notes from that hour and a half meeting, which I think was really time well spent. So we went and met with them on April fifteenth. So in trying to understand our grant and one, while we wasn't chosen, we, we just asked some good questions. So there's really, we can apply up to, for a renovation of a high school, we can apply up to sixty two million dollars. And then there's a five percent match. And uh we've applied for this uh three different times. On two occasions, I think we've applied for the full amount. Last year, we applied for a partial amount. One thing that we learned in the meeting is um that we probably should have applied, well, they're gonna look at the full scope of the project and they look at critical deficiencies. And we outlined our critical deficiencies as safety, um and we outlined our child nutrition program, our kitchen and cafeteria. If you don't include classrooms, they don't give you full credit for critical deficiencies. We, we certainly can prove we have critical deficiencies in the kitchen and cafeteria, but the primary resource of these buildings is to educate kids. Therefore, classroom space must be a part of the overall project, and it wasn't in last year's application. So we need to make sure that we include classrooms to get a category one for most points on the rubric. Um also, we need to complete a full renovation to get a yes on the rubric. That's, last year we had partial and that got us a no. So every time you can receive a little bit better check on the rubric, your score uh increases and pushes you to the top. Uh grants that receive, or counties that received the grant the last three years uh moved down the needle. And in our school system, another neighboring school system did receive the grant. Of course, we made uh, we asked some questions and I think this year, the grant application has changed, and so now it's one grant per LEA versus one grant per county. And that's gonna certainly up our chances because we have not, Surrey County Schools has not received a grant. So in looking at this, uh uh overall, we have gone from a tier two county to a tier one. That ups our chances on the grant application. Um we do realize, and they talked a lot about the western part of the state, probably getting some prioritization in this year's grants just because of everything that happened with Hurricane Helene, and we certainly understand that. Um so anyway, that document just outlines really all the things that we need to focus on in the grant. Um therefore, the needs-based uh evaluation. I also just gave you a copy of a blank uh twenty five, twenty six grant application. The grant looks very similar to what it looked like last year. And so we have to outline the project, um we have to outline the scope of the work. We have to be shovel-ready in two years. Um so there's, there's a lot of, lot of factors that go into the grant application. The five percent match, because we're a tier one county, uh again, as I mentioned, that's a part of that uh, that budget worksheet. And so really tonight, what I'm seeking is your guidance and direction on what projects you want us to write a grant application for. So originally, we've applied for all three high schools. We've applied for two high schools. We've applied for partial renovation at two high schools. We, we've kind of looked at this thing multitude of ways. And so this year, I'm looking uh really for direction in, in what I say is a short turnaround uh that we need to get our application idea to the commissioners for their approval so that we can then really in earnest start uh narrowing down, focusing on the grant application and getting this thing ready for the October third deadline. So I said a lot. What questions do you have? And how can uh I provide more information?
Questions?
That had to be, if we said we wanted to renovate a high school, that had to be a named high school. We couldn't say a high school in our camp, in our school system. Had to be a named.
It would have, yes, I, every project has to, there's an application for every project. I'm not sure that you could say a, a high school because we're gonna have to narrow that down to some specifics on the cost. And I think the work that we've done in the evaluation study that Mr. Powell's done would, I mean, that's where we're gonna get our numbers. And all those are generated by building, by school campus, not necessarily in general uh as a, a school. I mean, we could probably put together some things, but I, I'm not sure the application would, it wouldn't know where, where it's going.
I noticed in the uh, the documentation now, it's two hundred and fifty eight million they appropriated, which I think is lower, it was three, three twenty five or so last year. Seems like it's going down. And we couldn't say we have to be a specific school. We couldn't say we want to replace the English Wing in all three of our high schools. Does it have to be a specific one school?
No, it could be a partial project, but to get a yes on the rubric, a complete renovation's gonna get you a higher number than a partial renovation. And one other interesting point to note, if you do start work on a project, it's no longer eligible for a needs-based grant. Like if you started work on a campus, uh then that portion of the campus would be no longer eligible. They don't wanna, they don't wanna start with one funding source and end with theirs. They, they wanna see a project from beginning to end come to fruition all the way through grant, with the grant funding. And I'm assuming, Ms. Neely, that this, these funds are being distributed through the same office that we've worked with in the past as an accounting process. So that's very consistent with what we're used to with OSBN.
Yes, um well, it flows through the lottery. Um it throws through, flows through NCDPI. So we're gonna be dealing with uh Nathan Mullin and Dennis Hilton with all the distribution. You actually have to um submit the distributions kind of like the other lottery requests.
So what I'm hearing is to up our chances, we've gotta stop focusing on trying to do all three and be fair to everybody and pick one.
I think that's one option you have. I certainly think it strengthens, we, we can spend a little more time on one application versus three. Also, to the grant readers, it, it may, they're not, we're not gonna get three grants. You and I both know that. We're gonna get one grant, if we were to get a grant. I don't think we're gonna get three. We're gonna get one.
Let me see if I can get this out. So based on the age of the building, the score that Mr. Powell gave in his inspection of the schools, it would be my recommendation that we start with Surrey Central High School. Just it being older than, a, a year older than East Surrey and the fact that the s- the score is in the thirties.
Okay. Any other comments?
So my only comment will be is that we, we've tried the approach to do multiples in a year and not been successful. We've tried the approach of doing partial projects, kitchens and cafeterias last year on two campuses, and not been successful. Um based off of your information that you brought back from Laura, as I mentioned earlier in our closed session, that, yeah, that, that information is invaluable as to how they digest our applications. Uh and this is in our board documents, but our, our two applications last year ranked one fourteenth and one sixteenth out of a hundred and twenty two applications. Uh so I think what we've done in the past doesn't work, so we have to try something different. And it would be my personal opinion that we do identify one high school to apply for uh for the full cost of sixty two million. And it kind of goes back to what Mr. Badgett said about removing emotion from this decision um when he was talking about Gentry Metaview, uh because we all know the needs for all three campuses are dire. Uh no doubt about it. I'm sitting here looking at the uh study from Bill Powell. Uh East Surrey's sitting at uh fifty nine point seven six two million. Surrey Central, sixty one nine seventy eight. East Surrey, sixty million, seven seventy nine. That was last year's numbers. We all know those have increased since then. Um as Mr. Hutchins mentioned, he, he also done the scoring model. And East Surrey's thirty four, Surrey Central's thirty six, and North Surrey's thirty, forty five. And that's predominantly because they had the cafeteria uh addition in oh seven. So my approach would be, you know, okay, we look at those, we look at the, the value of the project, we look at the score from Mr. Powell because he is uh very detailed, as you can see the bat in front of me, that's the detail that he's provided on all of our buildings. But then we talk about enrollment needs as well, in my personal opinion, as you mentioned earlier tonight when we were talking about the districts. And that reflected a twenty two percent decrease in the east district, ten percent decrease in the north district, and then a neutral to three percent decrease in the, at Surrey Central. Uh so considering all of those factors, uh it would be my recommendation uh that we apply for the full se- that we apply for the full sixty-two million and identify Surrey Central as that campus that we apply for. Based solely off of the cost of renovations, the needs, as well as the potential ADM enrollment in the coming years.
Okay. All right, anybody else? I know you're gonna say something.
No, I believe blue and gray. We look, because I, I was part of the board when we did the first group of the three, and I think we were in the thirty-some range, like thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, out of the, all the school systems that applied the first few years. Now, like you said, one-twelve, one-fourteen. So, it seems to me the message is it needs to be a full school. I, the reason I ask the other one is I'd love to be able to do a part at each school and give them all the same thing. But it doesn't sound like the system is, is rigged against us to do that. And I will say, for the citizens watching this, and I hope you're listening, we're not going to direct our problems at our high schools just from state needs-based grants. We're gonna have to have money locally. We're gonna have to have money from our commissioners to do this. What that amount is, I don't know, and I, I can't, we, nobody knows, nobody can guess that. But I just want you to know that we've sixty years since these schools have been worked on. We can't just think we're gonna, you know, slap a little paint on it, put a Band-Aid on it, and we're okay. You know it, you know it. So, we, we've gotta, I, I'll ask, if you want our schools to be better, tell somebody that's in the decision-making process that you want to invest in our schools. That's all I'll say, and, and as much as it hurts to say it, I guess I'll have to agree. Surrey Central.
Okay.
Well, I, I feel like it's an objective way to look at the needs that's of all three high schools. And I agree, I know when we did the fields, you know, I, I was, I was more inclined to try to kick in additional funds, so, North Surrey would get the additional track improvements that the other schools got. And I understand from a, a standpoint, from a community standpoint, you know, we, we would like to benefit all three high schools. But with the information I've received tonight and, and the direction of the study that we, we paid for an intense study, it's an objective means to indicate maybe we should go with Surrey Central High School as far as the application.
But if I, if I could, I would say real quick, we've heard tonight from Flat Rock, our, our school, community-based schools are strong, and they need to be. So, we ought to be sitting up here thinking about what can we make sure that we keep our community strong in the North Surrey, the East Surrey, the Surrey Central community strong. So, that's not necessarily a bad thing, that, that we're thinking so much about our, our own areas.
Well, I've, I wanted to hear your all's opinion before I give mine. I, I do believe that Surrey Central needs to be the choice that we choose, not just because that's the school in my district or where I went to school, but because of the, the facts and figures that are laid out in front of us. That's not to take away at all from any of the other high schools. But like we had discussed, I believe that may, if we're fortunate enough and blessed enough to get that grant, that puts us on fire and, and in a really good bargaining position to get some work at these other schools. So, uh. I will make a recommend, or I'll make a motion that we move forward with a needs-based grant, focusing on one high school, that being Surrey Central. If there's a second.
I'll second that.
Second, now, Mr. Scales, any further discussion? All right, here none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, board members. Just as another note, our master's campus planning is coming to a conclusion with little. And so, you will soon see the work, about six months of work, where that architectural firm has met with all three high school staffs, and they've talked about needs, they've looked at academic programming, and really look at where the constraints are on the campus. So, they're gonna be able to present some, some good ideas for you to think about. And it certainly will, that work will derive some of this application, because Tom, Tom Balki and I have a call tomorrow morning. We're just waiting on, you know, what, what this decision was to get started on this grant. So, that, that master campus planning work that we've already done, it puts us closer to being shovel-ready for this grant application. And so, I think, again, the folks reading this grant are gonna take the look and say, hey, these, these folks are serious about getting this work done. Look at all the time and investment that's already been made. And I'd just say thank you to the commissioners for giving us the, the forethought to give us the seed money to get the planning started for the three high schools. So, we've got that started, we'll soon have that completed, and then, we can share that work and then move forward with whatever comes next. Okay. All right.
Let's take this thing home, board comments, Mr. Whitaker.
All right, I get, no, there was no pub, no public comments. Am I correct?
No public comments.
For the record, yeah.
All right, I'll get Mr. Valesby to put a picture up. I've got, I've got a photo for this.
Yeah, we do, we wanna see this one.
All right.
All right.
There's, there's, there's more to that photo than.
Worker's card does not count.
I'm gonna make a pretty good point with that photo. Uh, now, in August twenty-ninth, uh, the board, you don't have to zoom in. That's enough zooming in. I, I'll tell you when to zoom in. But on the twenty-ninth, we, the board went to Westfield Elementary School, and I always enjoy those board visits. And, uh, we went into the classroom of Mr. Bowles, his fourth grade class. And when we went there, he, he was running the students through a jumping contest. But it wasn't just a jumping contest, it's a, I guess, a standing broad jump. But he was documenting east jump, he is putting it on a graph. He was doing it in the metric system. And so, he had a point to what he was doing, but as we, as we walked in, he asked us, his board and, and Dr. Reeves, if we wanted to participate. Well, we backed off, and, but he was pretty persistent. And so, Dr. Reeves, he started us off, and he, he made a jump. And then, I was the second one to jump. And I don't know who took the picture, I blame it on, I guess, Mr. Sheets. But I don't know who took the picture. But anyway, that, before we had our lunch, that picture had circulated throughout in our school system.
Surrey County Schools.
So, uh, as you can see in that picture, uh, uh, the coal of that person that's getting ready to jump. So, that, that indicates that there's gonna be a lot of effort. And the second thing, if you, now you can zoom in, Mr. Valesby. Uh, the determination on the face. And so, and also, if you'll notice behind that, you'll need to lower it a little bit, the smile that's on the Mr. Bowles' face. Uh, and that, to me, that just indicated satisfaction of what he was able to get us to do. But, uh, but as I looked at that photo, well, and also, I got a comment that, uh, and this is a quote, says, "Bowles is ruthless. Walk in his room, and you better be ready to participate." And I was just thinking, that should be indicative of all our teachers, and I think they are. For him to be able to get the board, all the board members that were there to participate in that activity, uh, I think it's representative of all our teachers, how they can pull out from our, from our students things that they can learn and enjoy. And I did, uh, I did score, uh, in the fifty-five lowest percent. You know, it's amazing, it's amazing how far fourth graders can jump this damn time. But anyway, I do, he put us on the graph, and I was able to get a copy of the graph. But I do appreciate, I do appreciate him putting us through that and, and the teachers that we have. I think it's indicative of all the teachers that we have. Talking about teachers, uh, I wanna salute our teacher of the year last year, Jonathan Loncho, and, and he, I heard him speak at our complication, I heard him speak at our, we had educator of the year breakfast. And, uh, and he shared that he entered into this school system as a bus driver, and then, as a teaching assistant, and then, a teacher, and now, teacher of the year. And I just think that speaks volumes, not only for him and what he's been able to accomplish, but for our school system, that that took place in our school system. I also wanna salute our finance department. You know, I heard that we'd just gone through a, a recent audit, and there were no findings. So, and that was through a year of overcoming a lot of obstacles and different people that played a role in that. So, I just wanna salute finance department and, uh, uh, all of it led into, uh, the audit revealing no findings for the year. Also, wanna appreciate, uh, uh, those that accepted, uh, uh, different positions of leadership in our school system this year. And so, there's a lot, lot of appreciation to go around, but it's, it's good to be a part of a school system like this. Okay, Mr. Badgett?
I'll use that picture a second too, if I can. I gotta tell you, the first thing I thought is I prayed nobody pulled anything and had to go to the emergency room. Because there were, there were five of us jumping that probably could've, well, maybe not, maybe not Raleigh. But that was, it was fun, but I have to tell you, we talked about the teacher, and I know this, to my opinion, is every school in Surrey County, as we did this, we walked up there, you know, the old white guys in the room walking up to see how far we could jump, the kids were, hey, Mr. DJ Sheets, the room went crazy. They love him, I know that's what we see, well, maybe not in high schools. But in elementary schools, the kids lo, and, and then, I just, I thought about that, and I thought, wow, that's, that's something different about Surrey County, that, that he goes into a room, and I know all our principals do, and they just, they, they'd follow him anywhere. And I love that, and when, and he didn't quite beat us, but I believe he took it easy on us. I don't think he quite went as far as he could. But I, I did have fun with it, and, and the passion of Mr. Bowles and, and his students was great too. I wanna congratulate all our award winners tonight. You know, y'all know I had a preference there. Got to watch, um, got to watch the award ceremony on a live feed from Nashville. And more importantly than winning or losing, the way our kids accepted either winning or not winning blew me away. Their character of the kids in our school system is unbelievable. They just, I mean, if they didn't win, they were clapping for the winners, they were, and not all the kids were. And I was just so impressed by that. And, and again, I, I wanna appreciate all of our staff for everything they're doing. At my church, every year, the week before I go back to school, I always say, please pray for the students, but pray even more for the teachers, because we know what they're gonna be going through. So, I love this place, I love the school, I'll continue to work my butt off for it. And I think we just saw the, an example through this facility feasibility study, how passionate people in our, in our county are about their school, and I like that.
Okay. Mr. Hutch?
To the new folks that are joining us, transportation, finance, welcome. Glad to have you here. I wanna say congratulations to the staff of this county for starting off a successful year. Don't seem like there's been any issues. Of course, I'm sure there are, but that'll show you how good our staff is in, in that you're not hearing about it so much. And I too jumped in that little thing, and I want y'all to know, I jumped my height. Now, I know that's not saying nothing, so I'm just, but I did get to jump almost my height. So, anyway, uh, for whoever set up the visits for the school thing, thank you for moving them to Friday so that I could be at a few of them. I missed so many of them last year because of my work schedule, and I, and I'm really appreciative that I'm able to go to some of these things. I, I'm tickled this year, we're walking into some of the classrooms, and the kids are coming up to me. I know some of the kids finally. I've been in it, I've been in it enough time now that I'm starting to recognize a few of the kids, and they're coming up and hugging me, and I love that stuff. I actually got to eat lunch with one of them that goes to our church. So, anyway, I'm trying to get even more invested in this thing. But I just wanna say how thankful I am just to be a part of the school system.
Yep, I'll, I'll echo what everyone said this afternoon. I will extend a thank you to Ms. Arrington and her staff here at Pilot Mountain Elementary School for having us here, hosting us, as well as Lucas and the team that's put it together. I know it's no easy task. If you could see behind us here, you could tell how difficult it would be to put this together in a different location from our regular standing meetings. I too enjoyed my visit at Westfield. I will tell you, that's probably one of the highlights, getting out in the schools, seeing the students, and definitely seeing the excitement as the admin walks in. Every classroom we walked in, Mr. Sheets, those kids were, you know, coming, running up to him, and giving him high five, hugging him on the leg, um, finding out more about him. He was engaged as, as everyone throughout the system is, and I appreciate that. And with that, I'll keep it short.
All right. Well, I will be brief as well, I've talked enough tonight. I neglected to welcome at the beginning of the meeting, Ms. Neely is our CFO, and Mr. Llewellyn is our new transportation director. Thank you all for being here and believing in this school system. That's a huge testament for you all to be here, and I appreciate that. All the staff, thank you for what you do. Thank you for choosing this career and for sticking with this career, and for being Surrey County Schools that you're in. You could be anywhere, but you're here, and we appreciate it. That's all I've got, and we will do a couple of announcements. Staff development on nine nineteen, all the schools. October Board of Education meeting will be October sixth at the Government Center in Dobson. October ninth, Required Staff Work Day, all schools. And then, October tenth, Optional Lead Day, all staff for that Friday. And it's not on here, but the Educational Foundation is having our golf tournament Thursday.
Thursday this week.
Thursday this week. And then, we need a note about the public hearing. Yes, and, uh, public hearing, we will.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Is that the date that the planning is for now, anyway?
September twenty-second, public hearing on the Gentry and Metta View consolidation. More information will go out about that and be on social media as well. It'll go out tomorrow morning.
All right, anything else?
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion?
Motion by Mr. Whitaker?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hutchins, any further discussion? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, you all, for sitting through.